Let me say good afternoon to all of us. We will now call to order the special call agenda for the Muskogee City Council for May 22, 2023. Join me for the invocation and the flag salute at this time. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you so much for this day. We pray for your guidance and direction from the Holy Spirit, Father, that we may not make decisions in our shallow opinions, but, Lord, that we may be governed by you for the benefit of our people. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's look to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Perlin Boyati-Craig. Shirley Hilton-Flannery. Tracy Hous. Tracy McGee. Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Alex Reynolds. Jamie Stout.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jared Reed.
Here.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here. For the benefit of those watching, let me say that this is a special call. We will not need to entertain excused absences until we get to the actual city call meeting, City Hall, City Council meeting later on today. Item number one.
Presentation and discussion of potential general obligation bond program for fall 2023 election. Provide direction to staff or take other necessary actions.
Mr. Miller.
Yes. At our council retreat, we discussed alternative funding for capital projects that many other cities take advantage of, but we do not. We have not had a general obligation bond discussion or vote in this city in 50-plus years. It was, this is a tool that was used, I believe, to build the civic center and to build the public library, and those, those bond issues lapsed. We did not keep them going, and we've suffered since then by not having a consistent stream of revenue for facilities maintenance and for capital projects that many other cities have. At the retreat, the council said, yes, we are interested in looking at this as an opportunity for the city to fund its capital projects. You said, let's have a special call meeting. Let's bring in our bond council as experts to give us some advice. The questions that you ask us to be prepared to answer is kind of a process. How would we go about doing such a thing? You ask us, how much money can we get in house soon? And so these are the questions that we've come to if we decide to do it. Those are questions that we're ready to answer. So I do want to turn it over to Nate and Alan, who are going to come forward and walk us through some basics, Mayor, if you don't mind, and then we'll have some decisions about, is this something we want to do? And if so, how do we want to proceed?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. My name is Alan Brooks. I'm with Public Finance Law Group in Oklahoma City. This is my partner, Nate Ellis. We have done bond council work in Muskogee for a very, very long time. I've been a great client over the years, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. Nate and I are going to kind of hand this back and forth as we talk through this. We hope that this will be a very interactive discussion. As you have questions, please interrupt us, and we'll stop, and we'll deal with those and then move on. I know you've received in your packet kind of a term sheet that talks about how general obligation bonds work. I was just going to hit some high points on that. As Mike has indicated, Muskogee has issued geo bonds, but it's been a very long time ago. This is a source for funding your projects that you haven't taken advantage of in a long time. And again, it's a source or a funding source that's used by many other communities around the state. It's different in the sense it provides a stream of revenue, ad valorem tax revenue, that you aren't getting today. Your primary revenues the city has for projects and operations today are utility revenues, sales tax, and any kind of fee income that you might generate. But you can only get ad valorem tax revenue at the city level. One, if there's a judgment against the city, that judgment can be put on the ad valorem tax rolls. That's not very, that doesn't happen very often. But the only other way you can take advantage of ad valorem tax revenue is by voting general obligation bonds. So general obligation bonds have to be voted for basic, what we anticipate is what we call public utilities, which has been defined by the courts in Oklahoma as almost anything: streets, parks, roads, bridges, public safety. It's pretty broad. So you would go to the voters, you would ask them to approve debt for certain projects. Unlike schools, a city is able to issue debt with a 50% vote versus a 60% vote that's required for school elections. So that's one way that you can use this. It's a little bit easier. I think what we might do now is walk through some numbers, and if you want to start on those, Nate, you want me to hand some out? Because these are updates.
Alan and Nate, let me ask you, when you're speaking, and be sure you're talking to the microphone, because we're recording and we're live, and I want to be certain that the voters and taxpayers clearly hear us. Thank you.
Sure. You have this page in your packet. This is actually an update that we were able to go through, an update for an additional year's worth of information. What this shows is kind of history, looking back over the last 15 years of the millage levies by each taxing entity. And so you see the city has had, I think the city as practice does have periodic judgments that get rolled onto the tax rolls. And so you've had some nominal amount of levy each year going back in time. And then you see the other taxing entities: the school district, the county, the technology center, the library, the EMS, and the total levy in each year. And as you go across to the right, you see there's a 50,000, 100,000, 150, and a 250 column. Those are, if your home is worth that much, if that's what your tax assessed value is, that shows approximately what your annual tax would have been in each year, given the amount of value of your home. If you go down to the bottom, you see just three years set out. This is just kind of for convenience of looking at it. 24 just keeps the same levies from the most recent 23 fiscal year. 25 is what would it look like if we added 10 mils to that for the city to pay on geo bonds? And 26 is what if we added 15 mils? So that's not intended to say it's going to go up just like that. That's just, for example, so you've got all three side by side, and so you see what the taxes would be for each respective column value of the house. And if, you know, if you're somewhere in between, you can interpolate, take an average between the two, whatever the case may be. And then below that, you see the annual cost of a 10-mil levy on a $100,000 house would add $100 to the annual property tax bill, or that would be about $8.33. If you're, if you pay in monthly on a mortgage payment into your escrow, it'd add about $8.33 a month to the escrow payment. If you had a 15-mil levy at the city level, that would add $150 to the annual tax bill, or about $12.50 on a monthly basis. So that's basically how it works, millage levy. I mean, 10 mils is going to be about $100 each year. You can just multiply the mil levy by about $10, and that's, that's going to be what it is going to be. So any questions on that? The reason why we show you 10 and 15 mils is on the next page here. Yeah. You also have this page, again, this has been updated for the most current fiscal year. There's not a lot of change from last year to the next year, but this is a listing of municipalities across the state. The first group with Muskogee at the top, these are cities that, like Muskogee, are kind of a standalone city, not part, not a suburban area to another larger municipality, and ranging in size, a little more, a little bit less than Muskogee is. And you see, you know, there's a handful of communities, Bartlesville and Lawton in that mix, that currently have geo bonds outstanding. The next group is Oklahoma City, which has a geo bond program that they've continued for a very long time. And then those are all suburban entities around Oklahoma City, many of which have geo bonds. And the way you can tell is if, if there's a levy number that's, you know, four, five, 10, 15, 20, 25, whatever it is, they have geo bonds. And the ones that don't have any levy, clearly, they don't have any geo bonds outstanding. The last group is Tulsa and the surrounding communities around Tulsa. If you kind of look at an average, it's probably in the 13 to 15-mil range for a municipality. Oklahoma City as a practice, you may be aware, you know, a couple of years ago, they passed just short of a billion dollars of bonds. They issue about $100 million more or less every year, and they keep their target millage right around 15 to 16 mils. Tulsa tends to keep theirs in the 18 to 20-mil range. You know, Broken Arrow, you see, Jink, Sand Springs, Sepulpa, a lot of those communities somewhat similar in size to Muskogee, same in the Oklahoma City area. They, many of them have geo bond programs, and what they typically do is they will get an authorization passed, they'll get geo bonds in place, and then over time, as bonds pay off, they'll issue additional bonds. They'll go back to the voters periodically and renew for new, and, you know, whatever the newest needs of the community are from an infrastructure standpoint. So again, the highest on the list right now is Nichols Hills. They're a little over 25 mils. Again, there's, there's kind of a cluster in that 15 to 20 range, and then there's some that are down around the 10. But if, if there were an average, it'd be in that 13 to 15-mil range of what we typically see.
Let's just pause there a second. Does that make sense? Other question?
Step to the microphone if you don't mind.
Does that make sense? Maybe pause there, what's been explained so far?
On the school district, did we just pull Muskogee Schools District? Or is that, because we also have the Hilldale School District as well within the city of Muskogee.
Yeah, so the, the total tax rate, which includes the school, what I did for each of these, if it's Muskogee, it's Muskogee Schools. I just used whatever the same name school was. Yeah, certainly, other districts might have a little bit higher, a little bit lower levy, depending on what, what they do.
Okay. Yeah, because Muskogee split between Hilldale and Muskogee, so we would have two different school districts to factor in for those property taxes.
Right. Yeah. So again, in every example, Oklahoma City is Oklahoma City Public Schools. Tulsa is Tulsa Public Schools. Muskogee is Muskogee Public Schools. Just, I did that just to try and be consistent so that, because there are, there's a number of cities that have multiple different school districts within their municipal boundaries.
Any other questions, council?
So one of the things that we're trying to get to today is to figure out if this is the direction that we want to go. If so, we want to start talking about what sort of money do we want to look at? And if so, what sort of timeframe? Is that over a five-year, 10-year, 15-year timeframe, or a 25-year timeframe? And if we decide to do it, when do we want to have that election? So these are all information, kind of data points and decision points that we want to make. Nothing that we're doing today sets anything in stone, but to, to keep the process moving, we wanted to keep momentum, because the council was very supportive at the retreat about doing something like this. And so I guess what I would ask is, I haven't heard any objections, and maybe we should pause and make sure that there's not to just pursuing this process. If so, I think it's a good idea for the council to maybe weigh in on what sort of dollar amount or levy that they would be interested in, and what that, what that generates, and again, obviously, what that would fall to the taxpayer to pay, and then what we could do with the money. Because various council members have identified a lot of projects and opportunities in the 50 years since we've had this that we probably need to try and catch up on.
So one of the questions I was going to ask, so that the members of the council and those watching would understand, you guys have just actually passed out. If you can go down to the bottom of that page and talk to us a little bit about what that means in terms of the 10-year, the 20, and the 25?
Yeah. Yeah, so, so this last page, this is a historical net assessed property valuation within the city of Muskogee, and then as we get to the current year, it's projected looking forward. And so, you know, historical net numbers, those are numbers that have been calculated by the county assessor. That's been what taxes have been based off of in this community. Again, for, for any taxing entities, that's how a lot of their tax levies are set, anytime there's a bond issue involved. And so we look at that table that's immediately below the, the numbers. There's a three-year historical average growth rate over the last three years. You've grown, on average, about 3% year over year in your total net assessed valuation. If you look over the last five years, it's about 2.33%, and if you look over a 10-year average, it's closer to 1.87. So we look at those to inform us, what sort of assumptions should we make about our future growth? We probably don't want to predict 3% or 4% growth going forward, even though we've had that in the last couple of years. That's probably aggressive, and it's going to make us overestimate the value that we have. And why that's important is the valuation is going to determine how much a mil, or 10 mils, or 15 mils actually generates. And that in turn would dictate what size of a bond issue could be supported over a period of time. So for, based on that history, we've made the assumption that you continue to grow at 1% year over year. Hopefully, you grow faster than that, and, and there's reason to think you might very well do that. But just for kind of a conservative projection, so that we have at least realistic expectations, we've used that 1%. And all that kind of translates down to, at the bottom, we've got, all right, if we did a 10-year bond, if we did a 20-year bond, or if we did the maximum 25-year bond of a general obligation bond, if we had 10 mils in place, and that were our average target, and it's not going to be exactly 10 every year, it'd start off a little bit higher, and by the end, it would be a little bit lower, but on average, over the time period, 10 years, or, I'm sorry, 10 mils or 15 mils. We've assumed an interest rate based on what current market rates are. Everybody knows rates are up quite a bit from what they've been in recent years. They might go up more, they might go down. They will go up, they will go down over time. We know that for sure. We don't know what order, how much, but we do know they'll go up and down. So based on all those assumptions, that gives us an order of magnitude of how much project we could actually fund. So with 10 mils, for example, 10 mils on a 10-year bond, we could fund about a $25.5 million project. Kind of the opposite end there, if you had a 15-mil average over 25 years, you could fund on the order of about $77 to $77.5 million. So that kind of gives you the order of magnitude. You can, you can extrapolate, it's very linear, that. So, I mean, if, if you wanted 150 million in projects right out of the gate, you'd probably need about 30 mils. So, I mean, again, the order of magnitude, that's what it generally supports. If you grow faster than the 1%, then the impact on that is the mil will drop faster, and if you're trying to keep a specific target of mil, you may be able to issue bonds faster than projected over a period of time. If it grows, if it grows slower than that, you might have to slow down your issuance and take longer to get, you know, to maintain that average.
Make a point. What a lot of communities do, and we've kind of talked around this, is they go to their voters, ask them to approve a certain amount of general obligation debt with a commitment to the voters that we're going to average, or we're going to seek an average mil levy of whatever it is, 10, 12, 15 mils. And then again, as your net assessed valuation goes up and down, all right, you issue debt periodically to maintain that average mil levy. And again, that's, that's what most cities do when they issue debt. It's kind of a, a program, and you're fluid. You might issue bonds every few years, but again, with the idea in mind of, of doing what you told the voters you were going to do prior to the election, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Talk to us about how well it works if values go up because of the improvements that we've made in terms of our capacity to maybe go further, because we've reaped a benefit sooner.
So when you put a proposition before the voters, it's for a specific dollar amount. So whether that's one series or 10 series, if you go out to the voters and say, we'd like you to approve $50 million worth of projects, that's the limit in what you can issue without going back to the voters and asking for a future additional authorization. And so in, in doing that, we have to, we have to identify what the projects specifically are. We've, we've got to have a specific detail. So for instance, if it were streets, you might say, we're going to do Main Street from between First and Third. You'd be very specific, and you'd, you'd identify what the specific projected dollar amount is, and, and all that information is part of the election proceedings that are put forth before the voters to be able to approve. If your valuation increases faster, you could issue the bonds maybe faster. Maybe, you know, you do every year instead of every other year, or you do $10 million a year instead of $8 million a year to try and maintain that target levy, if that's your approach to doing that. And if you issue the bonds faster because you continue to grow, you, you might be going back to the voters for the next cycle of bonds sooner. You know, maybe, maybe it's a 10-year plan, but you grow and you get, you get to the end by eight years, and you've, you've finished the projects out, and you've, you've kept your target mil, and now it's time to go back to be able to maintain that target going into the future. So.
Thank you. I think, I know we'll probably have more questions, but maybe not. What we need to formulate among ourselves is to give direction to staff on the amount that we're looking at. I think it can be easily assumed, Jennifer had some numbers we were looking at the other day, that we've got well over $100 million worth of projects that need to be done right now. I think we shortchange ourselves if we say a 10-year bond, because that's not even going to get us anywhere. That may get us some studies, that may get us one or two buildings that need to be done, half a field done. I think we need to look at being certain that we go to the voters without having to be repetitive. So in my mind, I would, I think we ought to give direction to staff on the 25-year bond. That puts us closer to 77.5, because it does put us an opportunity where we can bucket projects that we need to have done now in our lifetime, because we did make a commitment to young people and families, that we would be certain that we did things now versus later. And it doesn't make sense in my mind to not ask for enough and then come up short and have to ask for another bond later. So I'm looking at this sheet, the last one they gave was handed out, the 25-year bond is 77.5, and I think that's probably the direction that we need to give staff tonight to prepare the documentation, and then schedule those meetings with the council to be certain that we've got everything on those lists that we need to have. That's my take, council.
I agree with the mayor. We do have over $100 million that we currently need to spend that we don't have. So I think that we need to go with the 25-year 15-mil average, so that we won't have to come back to the taxpayer again. I agree that we need to move forward with this.
We have lots of needs and that we need to get taken care of.
Yeah.
And Mike and Ms. Bowdenham, I think I'm correct in my assumption that we could just take this as direction to staff?
Absolutely. And so that's probably the, the next thing that we want to talk about is if we're going to go forward with that, we need to decide kind of when and how, right? And so we've talked in general, and one of the questions you asked us was, was how soon? Could we get this done? Because we, we know there's some urgent needs facility-wise especially. And so I'll defer to, to our, our bond council again about some ideas for, for dates, but I think there's one that's, that we can meet that's relatively quick, but that we can meet this fall.
So, so what Alan's passing out right now is the 2023 statutory election calendar. And so the election date is the first column, and because this is an odd number of year, we don't have federal or statewide office elections, like governor or president. So we actually have an election date available in every month this calendar year, except for December. When you move to 2024 election cycle, it's a presidential election, you'll have congressional elections, statewide offices, and so the elections will be limited to February, April, June, August, and November. They haven't published the exact dates. You know, they'll do that here in a few months, but it'll be those months and the other months, cities will not be allowed to have an election other than on those dates. So looking at this, when we call an election, most of the time, we have to give 60 days notice to the county election board in advance of the actual election date. If, if there is a statewide election of some sort, then it's 75 days. Right now, there's not anything on the calendar that would cause it to be 75 days. So in, in talking with staff, what we think is an attainable target would be looking at the October election date. That would need us to, or put us in a position where the council needed to take final action to call the election on or about, or just prior to August 10th would be our deadline. So that's a little more than two and a half months away, which gives staff some time to identify and have discussions about what are the specific priority projects, get as, as firm an estimate of costs that could be gotten at this point, at this stage, and then be able to have all that information for the council that they can approve, which would then go before the voters.
So if we, if we look at that timeframe, we would want to have some really solid feedback from the council in about a month, about July 1, about what are the priorities, right? And you all have, of course, the direct line of feedback to the community as well, as representative of the citizens. Staff will have input, as you've already seen from Chief Moore and Chief Teehee, about the capital needs of public safety, and Jennifer's got ideas about, you know, our facility needs. And then you all will have that opportunity to help prioritize those and say, okay, if we're going after, you know, $77.5 million, but we have $100 million worth of potential projects, which ones are highest priority? Which ones do we want to get the most budget detail on, so that we can put those into very specific projects? And if you all will talk a little bit about what a, what a ballot would look like, about how we have to determine the costs, and how there may be different propositions. For instance, we're not voting on just one $77 million. It's not one $77 million vote theoretically, right?
You, basically, you group your projects into like-kind buckets, okay? As an example, one proposition might be street improvements, and then we would identify within that category of projects. By statute, we have to identify where at least 70% of the money is going to be spent within that category. So as an example, if it was $20 million or the street improvements, purely by way of example, you would need to identify 70% of $20 million for specific street and projects. You could, you could identify more than that, but that's what you're required to identify. You might have another bundle of projects, which is public safety, as an example, and within that, you would identify what you're going to do within the public safety category. But as an example, we can't have one proposition that is streets and public safety, or parks and public safety. They, they have to kind of group logically together. So that's kind of the process. As, as you determine the projects, then we would work with staff, say, okay, if these are the things you want to do, let's look at grouping them this way, okay? Generally, we try to have fewer propositions. I mean, we prefer to have maybe two or three propositions versus seven propositions, as an example. It's just, it's, it's cleaner from the voters' standpoint, and, and we just try to limit that as we can. That's, that's the general process that you go through.
Well, good. Thank you. So is the, is the council have any other feedback on that October 10th date?
So would that be the only thing on the ballot? Would we want to not combine that with other, when there's more on the ballot, to draw more of a crowd to go out and vote?
Well, I'll, I'll let our, our outside counsel address that, but...
I mean, generally, the more things on the ballot, perhaps, perhaps it's, you don't get the focus on the issue. I mean, typically, the less things on the ballot, the better, particularly if there are other, potentially other taxing issues for, but again, typically, less is more when it comes to geo bond issues. Just get the focus on the question, so people know what they're looking at, and you can educate the voters very specifically, and they come in with that in mind.
Right. Right, and then we would still have time to do community meetings to meet with the public before we finalize what all's going, going to go into the different propositions.
So that's, that, we'd have to have that all determined before August 10th. So August 10th, or thereabouts, whenever we'd have a special call meeting, Mayor, probably. But early in August, we would have to have a, a vote of the governing body, of the, of the council, with those projects and those propositions all defined. So all our public input, all council input, all staff input has to be done in time for us to put that agenda item together for that early August meeting. So that's why I'm saying it's doable, but it's going to be a very intense focus, but I think it's worth it to have an intense focus to get some major things done in a very short-term horizon that we've been putting off for a long time. So, no, very good question. It would be a compressed timeframe over the summer to get all that public input, and that's why I said you, as city councilors, have been a direct conduit to the, the public as well about what kinds of things might need to be in this package.
Other directions, are we clear on the direction to staff to prepare documentation, schedule meetings, and have a list, a running list for all of us to be able to look at to continue to add or take away from?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm a little tardy today, so I didn't get to hear your presentation, and also, you have other councilors as out as well. So I think that this is something that the council as a whole should be listening to, and not just part of us making a vote on that. So I ask that you guys may need to do this again, so that the full council hear what's going on.
So luckily, we do have this recorded and streamed, and so, and obviously, they're available for questions as well, and I do appreciate that. And you're right, every council member needs to be very, very informed about what's going on, on this particular item. It's important for our whole community. One of the things that I would say is, I would like to have some input from council on how we get, what sort of process you all would like to see between now and, say, July 1, to develop that project list, right? So, we definitely want to make sure that we're hearing from you, and whatever, whatever methodology that we want to use to receive that, that feedback, because hopefully by July 1, like I said, we'll have the big list, and then we can go start saying, well, how much does it really cost to do that? So we can figure out how much of that dollar amount is going to be in each proposition, and how much, you know, th- those kinds of topics. So, I'll quit repeating myself. What sort of process would you like to see to make sure that we're getting an inclusive, big-picture list? And then, and then how does the council want to go about narrowing that list? Because again, it's going to be this group that decides what goes on the ballot.
And I did have one more question too, Mayor, that we get Ron Dean here to kind of explain also what that looks like. I know I did read some of the historical total property tax evaluation that you put here, but I think in-depth conversation with Mr. Dean would also help us, as well as reflect with the citizens.
Certainly. I think these numbers, Councilwoman, I think a lot of these came from the assessor's office.
Yeah, the historical numbers, in fact, I, I actually talked to Ron via email last week, just to confirm what we had for the, the most recent total net assessed valuation. So, yeah, but yeah, the historical numbers come from his office, and then again, the projection is just, I mentioned, historically, you've grown about 3% over the last three years, 2%, a little over 2% the last five years, over the last 10 years, it's been under 2%. Projecting forward, we only used 1%. I mean, if you grew faster than that, your capacity would be greater than what we talked about, but again, we don't want to overestimate, and then, and then you're in a position where you can't deliver, because you can't get bonds issued without having to greatly exceed what your target is.
Other questions? I think, Mike, Mr. Miller, to answer one of the questions you asked, I think one of the easiest things to do would be to have your staff send the, the larger list that you guys have already been working on to all of the councilors, and have it set up in some kind of way where there's a column where they could say, keep, delete, or even add somethings to those projects, so that we can have some semblance of a working document already in progress. And I think the sooner the council has that, the better. And then you guys would probably, Mr. Miller, through your staff, need to schedule enough lunches and communication events, or even special call if I need to.
Yes, sir.
That we may go through those lists and come up with something solid by the 1st or, or, 1st of July would be the latest that we need to have it, but we need to have something to start with. That's what I would think.
Okay.
That way, we've got a working document already going.
Absolutely, and so, any, anything in particular, again, that fits into these capital, capital project plans that any of you as council members want to make sure is in that plan, absolutely email Jennifer or I, and we'll make sure that they're in there. We have been listening, we do have a lot of ideas that you've already given us that are in our, our overall master plan document, so we'll try and get that together, Mayor, and have that distributed as soon as possible.
Other questions? That was the only item on that special call.
Yes, and Mayor, we do have a course of action that I'm comfortable with, moving forward towards an October 10th election date, with intermediate deadlines for us to meet as staff, and we're, we'll be anxiously working to meet those.
Sounds good. Here are no further discussion, we adjourned.